Good evening. Today's Monday, October 20th, 2025, 30, 5:30 PM. Uh, first on our agenda item for tonight is city updates by Brian McCain, Chief of Staff, five minute presentation.
Thank you, sir. Our team up to clean up Redumte over the weekend. We had a total of eighty-nine roll-offs with sixty-four at the state fairgrounds and twenty-five at CSU Pueblo, which equals about one hundred and sixty-one tons of trash that people brought in. Hand it out sixty-six vouchers so far. The vouchers are good for this current week and expire on Saturday, October 25th. Totalling all these numbers together, together, that means about eleven-hundred residents were served across all the sites in the city. We had, since we had a great turnout at the team up to cleanup event this weekend, thank you to everyone who joined us, all the volunteers and city staff. In addition to the team up to cleanup event, the city of Pueblo has partnered with Waste Connections from October 20th through November 1st for the fall cleanup discount days. This offers fifty percent discounts for city residents to utilize the Waste Connection Southside Landfill to make dumping more affordable. Solid waste, trash, yard trimmings, mattresses, and box springs are accepted. All loads must be covered and secured to receive the discount. Waste Connection Southside Landfill hours are Monday through Friday, seven AM till five PM, and Saturday beginning at eight AM till about one PM. Waste Connection Southside Landfill is located at fifty-seven fifteen West State Highway seventy-eight. Join Pueblo Parks and Rec for a trunk or treat this weekend at El Centro from four to seven, located at six ninety East Sixth Street. There will be games, candy, and fun for everyone. This is event is free to the public and open to everyone, so we'll see you there. The City Halloween. Join the City of Pueblo on Halloween from two to four PM Friday, October 31st for a touch a truck and a trunk or treat event in the parking lot of City Hall down here, kind of by the Angelo side, along with trick-or-treating inside the building with departments from across the city. Bring your kids, family, and neighbors to enjoy a safe and unique experience for all on Halloween. PD updates for October ninth through the fifteenth. Last week in patrol, the following occurred in addition to handling almost two thousand six hundred and ninety-nine calls for service. Dice had thirty-two loitering citations in the following areas, eight hundred East Fourth, Santa Fe and Fourth Street, thirty-four hundred block of North Elizabeth, Eagle Ridge and I twenty-five, seventeen hundred block of Constitution, and eight hundred East Third. One use of median citation on fifty and Elizabeth. Uh, one open container citation for the three hundred block of West Eighth, three theft citations. Twelve municipal warrant arrests recovered almost eight hundred in stolen property and assisted code enforcement with two search warrants. Watch one had eight loitering citations issued in the following areas, Fourth and Glendale, thirty fifty West Northern Avenue, with two trespass citations on the twelve hundred block of Spruce. Watch two had two arrested for felony eluding on dirt bikes on Third and Norwood. Four loitering citations at the following areas, Eighth and Grand, the Main Street Bridge, and two traffic citations, one vehicle towed for no insurance. Watch three had two hundred and eighteen COP calls yielding eighteen traffic stops, five failures to yield, thirty-one walker stops, fourteen suspicious vehicles, and three disturbances. They had twenty-seven citations issued, twenty-seven proactive calls in the Northern Avenue COP area, and twenty-eight proactive calls in the Abriano Mesa Junction COP area. And just a reminder, everybody, um, don't leave your car unattended and running in the morning to warm up as it's getting closer to winter. Um, I'll have the numbers on that, but just prevent crime before it happens. With that, that's my update.
Okay, any comments, uh, counselor, excuse me, President Mark?
Thank you. Is there any update on that hangar door? Did the RFP go out?
Uh, not yet. I think we're meeting tomorrow on it, um, either tomorrow or the next day to go over some airport stuff. There's a few other issues, but I know Andrew and Greg at there are part of working on it right now.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor. Yeah, I just, uh, wanted to follow up on our Sky Correll issue. Uh, was wondering if you might, uh, see where we're at on that. I know that there was, there was a, uh, uh, a glitch, I guess, on, on a elevation or something about where that was going to go.
Yeah.
And, uh, but I, I was wondering if you wouldn't mind calling Brian Caruso. He's the president of that club.
Yeah.
As to what the next steps are. He's just worried about winter now. And I was wondering if you wouldn't mind doing that and, uh, following up. And then hopefully when the RF, um, uh, the RF, uh, Q comes out, that, uh, if it's going to cost more money just because of the length of time it's taken, I'd like to include that in the budget. I just want her to be on record on that, if you don't mind following up on that.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Counselor Boston.
Thank you, Chair. Um, this is unrelated, but I just wanted to let you guys know that, uh, I'm considering an ordinance that I'm going to bring forward to council that'll change the start time of the meetings from seven PM to five thirty PM. I think this will allow a better chance for public engagement. A lot of people don't want to be here that late into the evenings. Uh, five thirty's after work, work sessions, people can't speak anyway. So I think having those start at four PM and be recorded and allow people to view those afterwards is okay. Um, just want to let you guys have that time to think about it, but I just think for public engagement sakes, starting the meetings at five thirty will give people a better opportunity to, uh, be involved in the meetings.
Counselor Martinez.
Um, so with the federal shutdown that's been looming for now about a month, um, I've read a lot of articles about how the shutdown is, has affected, um, federal programs like WIC and SNAP. And I asked today how SNAP is going to be affected at the local level. And, um, the answer that I received is that SNAP's going to be out at the end of the month, and that's really concerning for me. Um, because we know how, how many families, you know, in Pueblo get SNAP. So I have two questions. My first question is, um, Mr. Oh, Mr. Gifford's not there. Carla's online. Carla, sorry. Um, then, so the next, uh, meeting next week, October twenty-seventh, is the last regular meeting that we have of the month. Um, and before obviously the end of the month. And so one of my questions is, does that constitute an emergency ordinance? Should we, um, because one of my ideas is to fund local food banks. Um, if the government is going to continue to be shut down, that way people can go to local food banks and make, you know, get fed. Um, should SNAP be going away at the end of the month? So that's my first question is, does that it constitute an emergency ordinance for next Monday? Should we want to pursue that route?
So you could potentially run it as an emergency ordinance depending on what you want to do. So, um, so what I would suggest, um, Counselor Martinez is that, uh, we can talk about it and then depending on what you want that, um, that to look like, then we could get that on as an emergency ordinance.
Okay, that sounds good, Carla. I appreciate that. I think, um, then we'll follow up offline because I, I want, I think it's important that council does something to help the food banks because I'm assuming that, um, you know, once SNAP goes away, the, the local food banks who are already taxed are going to be even more overcapacity, and I want to make sure that our, um, families get fed.
Asking if you had a dollar amount in mind?
I don't have a dollar amount. One of my ideas is to make it like reimbursable. So that way it's not like an upfront, you know, X amount of dollars. But if it's reimbursable, then food banks can, you know, turn in their receipts to the city. Um, and it's not, you know, we're not, we're not paying them for necessarily food that's unused. I don't know. That was my idea here.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other comments? I think, you good, Joe? Okay, I think we're fine. Anybody else? Good? All right, we're going to go right into item Agenda B, a motion to reconsider item more from the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five agenda. It was a resolution establishing project account C one two five two one Greyhound Park Blight Removal, transferring funds in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars from project account C one two one one three, American Rescue Plan Act and dispo- and depositing and appropriating five hundred thousand into project account C one two five two one. Greyhound Park Blight Removal. Roger Gomez, this is going to take me ten minutes, probably take less than that. But I went, I, I went to the charter. I started putting some, pulling up some information, and this is directly from the public charter section two one seven, the reconsideration of votes, and it states, "The public city charter allows a council member who voted with the prevailing side, meaning the side that won the vote, to move for reconsideration of that action within a certain time period, typically ten days from the date of the original vote." "The rule is not unique to Pueblo. It mirrors standard Robert rules of orders and is common in municipal charters across Colorado's Pueblo's Virgin, just codifies the timeframe into the city's own law." "The charter and council rules of procedure give this ten-day window to ensure, one, stability and finality in decision-making, no definite reversals, but flexibility in case new facts or public input and soon are soon after the vote." "Purpose and reasons behind it, correcting mistakes or misunderstandings. A counselor may realize afterward they misinterpreted the motion, misunderstood a staff report, or pressed the wrong button during an electric vote." "The ten-day recision window provides a formal way to correct that, responding to new or material information, sometimes after a council meeting, new information services, for instance, a budget detail, legal issues, or community concern. That might have changed the outcome." "This rule, this rule also allows to revisit the matter before it becomes irreversible." "Preventing in-state instability or abuse, limited reconsideration to ten, ten days ensures that council cannot reopen settle cases issues a month later for political reasons. It's a balance between responsiveness and governance stability." So having said that, um, in reference to what I had pushed forward to get a reconsideration is why we're here tonight. And this is based on charter language that I'm bringing forward. Anybody have any comments or, or concerns? Nobody? We're good? Okay, that takes care of that. I didn't think it would take ten minutes. Okay, now we're going to move on to item Agenda C. But yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Yeah, I want to reconsider the vote. Thank you.
Make a motion.
My motion is to reconsider the vote, um, and in reference to account number C one two five two one.
If you could read the whole.
A second?
If you could read the whole item B, please.
This whole thing again? I'm sorry, I'm, okay, thank you.
I make a motion?
So I, I'm sorry, only someone on the prevailing side of the previous vote can make the motion.
Can you repeat that, please?
Only people who voted in the affirmative, who voted for this to pass originally, are the ones who can make this motion.
Oh, so either you, Brett, or Sarah.
Or Dennis.
Making this motion to reconsider, to reconsider item G, excuse me, Q nine from the October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five agenda, a re- resolution establishing project account C one two five two one, Greyhound Park Blight Removal, transferring funds in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars from project account number C one two one one three, American Rescue Plan Act and depositing and appropriating five thousand, five hundred thousands dollars into project account number C one two five two one, Greyhound, Greyhound Park Blight Removal. Is there a second?
I, I, I need some clarification and a point of order. Uh, it sounds like we're reconsidering a motion. This is not the motion on the actual item. We're just allowing ourselves to reconsider this.
That's correct.
So that's all this is?
Yes. So if this motion goes forward with a second and then is, um, voted in the affirmative to be reconsidered, it will appear on the October twenty-seventh agenda.
That's what I thought.
For the actual item to be reconsidered. So this is just to whether or not to bring this resolution back. And, and for the record, too, I would like to clarify, the account numbers are CI rather than C one, um, for, for both the CI twenty-five twenty-one and CI twenty-one thirteen.
So a yes is to bring it back, and I know is to keep the existing.
That's correct, but we still do need a second.
So do we have?
Is that by, I?
Anyone can second.
Second.
Okay. Yes?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we have, we can run a vote if you, unless you would like to have further discussion, we could run a vote.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Asking if you want further discussion.
Uh, this, no. Yes, do we want, yes, we, yes, we do. Further discussion. Dennis, anything? Could you do it? Okay.
I, yeah, I do.
Sarah Martinez.
I'm curious now, you know, so, uh, council passed this four-three last week. Um, the developer, I'm assuming, has already started work on this project. What is the developer? Have, has, have they started anything? Or has the city started anything? I'm, I'm really worried about how, what the developer and developers in general are going to think because of this flip-flop.
I can't tell you what they're going to think, but as soon as we were notified that there was going to be a motion to reconsider, um, to make sure that the developer was aware of the situation, we did make that phone call, letting him know that a city councillor had probably changed his mind and that this would be walked back, so they would not be receiving the demo funds, so.
And what did they say?
Uh, they were pretty disappointed.
Councilman Flores?
I have no comment. I'm ready to vote.
Okay. I, I'll start with myself, I guess, in reference to the vote.
Uh, we, we, we can do a digital vote.
We're going to do.
We're prepared for a digital vote if you'd like to run it.
Passes five to two. Okay. You know? Hmm. Well, okay, that takes care of that, correct? No, we're going to go to item Agenda C unless anybody has other comments. Uh, Circle K Project, twelve hundred Orman, Melissa Cook, Director of Department of Housing and Citizen Services, Andrew Hayes, Public Works Director, fifteen-minute presentation.
Good evening, council. We are just pulling up the PowerPoint presentation. It'll be here in just a moment. Okay, great. So, uh, we are here today. As you know, we did have, um, a few items on the agenda this last Tuesday that will be up for reconsideration or, or on, uh, first reading this upcoming Monday. So we wanted to give you a lot of insight into this project, why we do think this could be a viable project here within our community, uh, and, and answer any questions that you may have. So first of all, on this upcoming Monday, there will be a resolution approving the project account, which actually I think is in as an ordinance because we assume that there was going to be a discussion on both. Is that right, Andrew? I'm sorry. Okay, great. Uh, and what that resolution is, it's actually an ordinance, but it is the same as the resolution that was brought to you in April this year. Uh, in April this year, we actually couldn't give you a lot of details of what was in this because it was proprietary information at that point. We couldn't tell you who the investor was, who the developer was looking to develop. And now we have all of that information, so we're here to bring that to you. In addition to that resolution, which is just sweeping several different project accounts that have already been budgeted and appropriated for, for, uh, demolition projects throughout our community, we also have a purchase agreement for six hundred thousand dollars to purchase the property, uh, and we'll, we'll show what that looks like. Ultimately, this started, uh, last year with Scott Hobson, the previous director of planning. And, uh, there's been several iterations of this contract, and it's, it's really grown quite a bit, um, or changed quite a bit over the last year and a half. So initially, it was supposed to be demolition assistance to demolish the property located at Converges, which we know is blighted. It did change ultimately because of the contract negotiations between Circle K and, uh, Co-Centrix, which is the owner of Converges. So if I refer to them, they're one and the same. Uh, and now we are just assisting this. It's actually a lesser amount of money, but to purchase the back lot, but the intent is still to make the deal feasible with the added expenses of demolition. So you saw these photos last, last week. These are just photos taken, uh, in the recent days from the interior of the property. It's completely open to the sky. You can see this driving down northern, uh, but it's much worse actually once you get inside. So this is a lot if you're looking overhead, uh, with northern being on the, the bottom part of this, southern to thirteen lots thirteen and fourteen. Right now, and this may not, yeah, this is a unique situation. The city actually owns this, this lot here that I've highlighted. It's actually two lots that the city owns. It is just has parking lot and some signage over it. And then Co-Centrix or Converges owns the remainder of the property. What we are wanting or what the end goal here is, is that Circle K will have the lots highlighted. And the city would be, uh, purchasing the lots in the back, and there's also a land swap because of course the land that is, uh, lots twelve and thirteen would also be swapped, and, and that would change legal ownership as well during this. And our goal is to put between forty-five and fifty workforce housing, uh, units on the back part of the parcel. So we're going to talk today about several different considerations and why we think that this is a very viable project. Um, we want to talk about tax increment financing. We want to just talk about economic development piece of this. Um, the units that it will create, and then how it is going to address the food desert in the area. So one of the big considerations with this project is that, as you all know, it's in a TIF district. Well, this TIF district, when it was created in twenty twenty-four, there's never been an identified catalyst project. I'm sure that the folks from the Urban Renewal Authority would be happy to come in and talk more in detail about this. But ultimately, this TIF district is not set to make money. Uh, unless there is some catalyst project, this TIF district will likely not create any sort of tax increment financing through the duration of its twenty-five years. There has to be some sort of catalyst project to increase those property taxes there. Um, right now, the building, the, the Converges building is assessed at seven hundred and one thousand, almost seven hundred and two thousand, with the land being at a hundred and twenty-one thousand. And so what we're going to talk about is how that impacts that TIF district and how we can use this project to be that catalyst project that will actually help out that TIF district and be financially viable. So, um, for those, I think everybody probably knows, but really quickly, what TIF is, tax increment financing. It is a tool of the Urban Renewal Authority, um, which is one of the economic development arms of the city. So in that area, it was identified and approved by all of the taxing entities that there was a base property tax amount. That base amount is represented here that should go to the, the taxing entities at the time of the creation. And then as that, the, what the TIF district is, is that difference that you're going to receive in taxes because you're improving the neighborhood would then be used to, to pu- give back to that neighborhood. And then ultimately, at the end of the, the TIF district timing, the usually twenty-five years, the lifespan of a TIF district, those taxes then continue to come back to the city or, or whatever the taxing entity was in the first place. And so what we are looking to do, we're working with our partners at Urban Renewal. Um, you would have your, your current TIF baseline. It includes the Converges building. We want to work to reset or readjust that baseline at the time of that demolition occurs, and then use the construction of the Circle K to be that first catalyst project. So right now, um, you know, as I mentioned, the current TIF on the project is likely going to generate little or no TIF throughout the twenty-five years. We want to take advantage of the, of the potential demolition of this building, and if we do, then here you can see on this slide represented in year two, we would lower that baseline, which would allow for a catalyst project. So the, when we lower that baseline, the base tax decrease would be five hundred and eighty thousand dollars annually. We then would take that, the new construction of it, and increase up over six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars annually, um, which would create that TIF for the district, to be able to give back to the district. I think that this is something that is really important, that we look at the whole of this project and not just look individually at each of, you know, the, the sectors that this project may, may touch. Ultimately, I think that we could end up with a long-term successful project, um, with our partners. So of course, we do know that this will also create housing. This project is an ideal location for tax credit equity. Tax credit equity is the main vehicle that is used to finance, uh, workforce housing development. They look at things like whether it's close to food transportation, uh, what the, the maximum density would be, and whether there's a ability for ample parking, which there is at this site. We do believe that we could, uh, utilize this site as in having three-story walk-up type units and, um, very easily fit between forty-five and fifty workforce housing develop, I'm sorry, workforce housing units. We have talked to several developers on this property as well as one other that the city already owns, and we are actively looking to issue an RFP. There's a lot of, of folks who are interested in this, um, that would be interested in coming down and, and acting on a site like that very quickly. Uh, as we all know, there are several areas of Pueblo that are located in grocery deserts and food deserts. Uh, the base store, this of Circle K's model that they're looking to bring in, the base store is thirty-six hundred square feet. A good example of that is what you see on their new store location on South Pueblo Boulevard, um, over by the dog track. That is their base model. What they are looking at, uh, for this one, because of the fact that it is in a food desert, they are looking at bringing in an additional twelve hundred square feet that would be dedicated to grocery and only grocery for the area. This is especially critical after the closure of, I think it was the Family Dollar, which was another, uh, store in, you know, in that area that did offer some sort of food. We know that this isn't, uh, a, a full-blown grocery store there, but it would absolutely address a lot of those needs. And Circle K, they said that they're committed to ensuring so long as the numbers are there, which we know that they will be, that there is a demand, that they would be willing to put in that additional twelve hundred square feet for upgraded store. Uh, we know that the closest grocery store there, if you're walking, is one point seven miles. Of course, that's infeasible to walk to and from. You know, just talking about economic development, I, I do think it's important when we talk about a project like this to look at it. It's not just a housing project. It's not just addressing the, the food desert. You know, it really is looking at, at all different angles of what we need in that area. Um, of course, it addresses the blighted commercial that we have, and the idea, and of course, it attract, or it, it addresses the attractive nuisance that we have in the current vacant building. I want to address quickly, um, two questions that were brought up during the October fourteenth discussion, as I'm sure that they're going to be asked tonight, so I wanted to be proactive about that. I'm actually going to do this out of order, uh, but the first one was, do we have an appraisal? And the answer is no, because this is not intended to be a one-for-one transaction and purchasing this at market value. As I mentioned at the top of this, we were looking at this in what did they need in order to make this project feasible, that the city would put in, in demolition funds? We cannot actually give them these dollars in demolition funds because we are not the ones responsible for the environmental compliance. Um, and it puts us at, you know, further risk than what, um, we may need to be with this particular project. We know that we are going to have federal funds likely in the back with the housing project. We cannot federalize this project now by using our funding, um, to demo, to demolish it. That's why this actually changed into an acquisition contract. It did start, you know, early conversations were that they may need up to nine hundred thousand dollars. We've really narrowed in on what their gap was to make this feasible, and it's six hundred thousand dollars. And then the second, uh, the second question was, um, why should we, in the state, with all of the vacant homes that are burned in Pueblo, why should we fund blighted commercial when we have all of these blighted residential homes that need assistance? Um, and, and I think that that is a very heard, uh, thing. We know that a lot of the community members are talking about these blighted residential units. What, uh, you all don't know yet, and what we're really excited to bring to you soon, is I think that we found a solution. So, um, later this week, we're actually presenting about it at the, uh, PURA TIF Summit. They have a tax increment financing summit. And I'm not going to get too into this, but I just want to give you enough to know that I think that we have a very, very viable solution, and we have seven point five million dollars that we can tap into, um, utilizing our future CDBG grant years. So we identified a program that is a loan program that is intended for, um, spot, well, it's not intended, one of the uses is spotlight removal. And we can utilize a very low interest debt rate from the federal government. We have to apply through a grant. Um, and it can be used to demolish low, uh, commercial, I'm sorry, it can be used to demolish spotlight for residential properties. This, and then the, the problem with that always has been, how do we service that debt? How do we pay back the money? And we would use our future CDBG allocations, uh, to pay for that if the TIF was not generated in those districts. So there's a lot more to come on that, but I think that it was really important in this conversation to bring that to you because we actually do have a solution. Seven point five million dollars would be enough to knock down every home in Pueblo, um, that we have currently identified. You know, I think it's, it was at sixty the last time that we spoke, and we know that we have four or five more that entered that. That would be enough to address all of those, those units. And so we're really excited about that. Um, it is not something that we do tomorrow. This is a, has a lot of planning and a lot of lead time. And I'm sure that we will be coming back here and talking to you all about this in much more detail, uh, in the coming months. But that was important just because that's why we want to look at addressing commercial blight as well as residential blight. I think we have a plan for the residential that we're hoping will be executed within, I would say, probably twenty-four months. And so just to, to close out, I think that, you know, we are looking at six hundred thousand dollars to this for a public-private partnership. Um, it would really look at four key things. It would assist in the generation of TIF and make that potentially a successful TIF district. It of course would remove the blight in an area that, that really needs it. We could create workforce housing for Pueblo's residents, and we could address the food desert in that area. And so, um, unless you have anything to add, I think that, that concludes me. Thank you. We're here for questions.
President Mark.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I mean, it makes a tremendous difference when you know how the, all of I mean, it makes a tremendous difference when you know how the, all of the pieces are working and and where everything's going. Last week I said, you know, I don't understand why these these projects aren't under, they're all in, in urban renewal areas, why aren't we using that? Well, you've answered the question. And, you know, I'm satisfied that this probably is a is a great project. And Lord knows that area needs some some rejuvenation. We did an urban renewal district over there specifically for something like this to happen. And and, you know, quite frankly, I never thought of it from the catalyst side. And that's, that was an important part for me in your presentation. And, you know, thank you for that.
Councilor.
I think this is a great plan, no question about it. I wanted to talk about Converges. That that is the the deed holder of this property at this point, the entire property, except for that one little piece. What what caused that building to collapse in the center? There was rumors that they'd gone in and taken all the copper, all the, you know, all of the interior stuff they could, I guess, to resell. Do we know the history of why that roof collapsed and 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 what was actually vandalized in the inside?
I can speak to some of that. I'm not sure the exact reason why the roof collapsed. But we do know that the contractor who's currently working on cleaning out the collapsed roof portions has also told us that the copper, electrical, HVAC, everything inside the building is basically being gutted and removed by vandals. So they've cleaned that up and they're getting to a place where they can do the rest of the demolition of the property without significant further complications. They do have some asbestos abatement to do, but that's that's the last step before they can take the building down.
The reason I'm asking is that I'm a, what do we know about Converges now? Are they still a viable company? And, I mean, they haven't gone bankrupt or they haven't collapsed, have they themselves? Are they still a viable company?
I do believe so. I I don't know that our primary contact in this has been Circle K. So our contract is with Circle K as the developer, not with the current owner. So I do believe that they still have, you know, a presence in in possibly other states.
Right. So when we negotiate to purchase this this property, we know that you have an appraisal of 702, 702,000 on the on the building and 121,000 on the land. Will we be negotiating that or Circle K somehow going to be doing that?
Yeah, let me clarify. So those numbers come off of the tax rolls and what they're currently assessed at today. That's not an appraisal.
I think you said appraisal, but that's what threw me off.
Oh, if it did, then then I apologize for that. Yeah, there is no appraisal in this case and it's a valid question, you know, and that's why I wanted to address that. Because this is not intended to be a one for one, an arms length transaction, if you would, of a purchase of land at market value. This is intended to be funds that the city can assist with in order to make this demolition possible.
The reason I bring it up is that if you've got a viable company here like Converges, they likely got reimbursed for all the vandalism to that building. And so whoever's negotiating this, if I were in their shoes, I would give up the property for nothing. I mean, they've been reimbursed, a guarantee they have. And I don't know how we find that out, but it would be a good wedge, okay, to discuss, you know, taking over the building. And I I just wanted to throw that out there because I think it's a negotiating tool, whether it's through us or whether it's through Circle K, is that they obviously got reimbursed already for the damage that was created there. That's vandalism is a peril that's always covered under a fire policy. So I just, I bring that up for that reason, just to consider the 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 tax credit equity, a developer that would want to take the job of building these 45 to 50 units. I would imagine that they, that's a project they would, they would have to finance, inherit everything that's there and it's their baby. Our assistance would be in them getting these tax credits. Is that how that operates?
So this would be, yeah, a tax, the size of it is perfect. Now, we don't know, there's, it's possible that this could be a housing bond. You know, they could use private activity bonds to finance this. There are several different mechanisms. But I will tell you with the size of it and and the size of that acreage, that is the prime spot and the the prime size to have a low income housing tax credit deal. They naturally can only go up to about 50 units. They're they're usually right between 40 and 50 and with the lower cost of construction, Pueblo versus the rest of the state, Pueblo versus Denver, you can usually get, you know, 45 to 50 units rather than in the in the low 40s. And so that's why I I say that it's a prime possibility for those tax credit equities. So that's actually through the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority. There are state and federal tax credits. It really depends on how you structure it. The only other funding that I think would likely go into this would be the City of Pueblo's home dollars, which are the pass through federal dollars, which, you know, generally you you put into those low income housing tax credit projects.
Excuse me. I had one more question and it has to do with the TIF. So we've, we've got a project here that is going to generate, I think you said, 615? Is that right?
That is the, I'm talking about the base assessed value. And so, you know, in theory, this is something that I want to, I actually should put kind of a disclaimer out there. I am not the Urban Renewal Authority. We need to make sure, we are working with them very closely with this. And I mean, it's very possible I used the wrong terminology in this in this presentation. So just know that what we're trying to do is the intent of lowering that baseline at the time of demolition and then increasing it back using Circle K as a catalyst project. Otherwise, what happens is we demolish, build back, and we're still the same place that we are today. And so the idea is capturing and getting all of the taxing entities on board and agreeing to to capture that. So we think that this is a great, a great project. I know that Cherish has already, you know, we've had conversations with her and she's already working with their legal team on exactly what the mechanism is to do that. We think that we can do it through counsel. But this is stuff that we need to bring them and as the experts on. I just want to clarify that I don't want to speak for them and that that 615,000 does not represent physical dollars every year. That is the the tax base. And then that would be the tax increase immediately that you would have in the the tax increment rather than that project or that that entire project area already being at a tax decrement.
So when you talk about Circle K, they're anxious to do this project on that corner. What, what incentive are we going to provide out of that tax increment to Circle K?
It's a great question. I'm glad you asked it. There will be none. And the the reason being is Circle K did approach PURA on this project, but there is no, there's no viable funding in that in that TIF district at this point. So they weren't able to help. So normally, if it's a TIF district that has a good catalyst project, they can go out, get bonds upfront, help with infrastructure or whatever it is that they need in that project. Because there's no viable dollars being made in that, in that TIF district, it's similar to some of their, they have, I know one other TIF district that is in the tax decrement. They can't actually put any dollars into it unless they're their pilot dollars that can be used, you know, across projects. And so they they did not give anything. Circle K did go to them and I think that in a perfect world, that is where the $600,000 would come from, right? $600,000 to help with the the elimination of this blight. But until we, and that's why it's important that we need to be those partners, until somebody can partner with them and create a TIF district that's generating money, there's just nothing there to tap into.
Well, once they're up and running, they're they're, and we've created the TIF district, they're generating state taxes there that will come back to us into the the TIF. Well, come back through urban renewal. So what do we expect to do with that money?
I don't know. That would be, you know, a conversation between council and urban renewal. But I think the the great part about this is there's now the potential, if if we do this, there's the potential that there could be money there to help, you know, maybe with facade improvements and and northern or whatever the case may be.
Right. I had another question, but I forgot it.
If I could real quick follow up on council, your question about the insurance coverage. There was, obviously the note that suggested that there was a very high deductible on the on the building at the time. We'll confirm that and make sure, but it may have been foreign excess of with the value of that claim. So I don't believe there was a claim filed, but we'll confirm that.
Usually they're, they would have a replacement cost on the building, which would be a very high number. Obviously, we know that building market value is nothing, but if they really want to place it, they would have reimbursement value and that's a pretty low building. So they could have a very large number.
We'll double check that and make sure.
Councilor Meister.
So I guess what I'm trying to understand here is what you said was if we were going for to name this a TIF district at this time and use this as the one of the projects in that TIF district, that they would be able to go for bond money to do this project. Is that what I heard from you?
Yeah, I mean, that's generally how TIF districts work is when you have that catalyst project, you have a promise of future dollars coming into that. So you borrow upfront the money that's going to be repaid by those increased taxes over time, over the next 25 years.
Yeah, I know, because that seemed to be like a big question, why we were making it a TIF district at that time when we, this was kind of lingering in the background. Like, why did we do that instead of waiting till this came to fruition, to make it part of it? And then that way you could go for those TIF dollars was my understanding. So that kind of explains that a year later, whenever we made it a TIF district, that answers the question a year later. Is there, is there something in the statute that says that we can't do demo, use city funds, public funds to do a demo on something that we can't lean?
No, not that I'm aware of. I think that it's best practice to lean it. If it's, you know, situations where you have an unresponsive owner. You know, we, we, for instance, all of the residential single family properties that we demolish, we do lean those.
So what we're doing in, I think, what is it, a resolution to demo for 600,000? But we're really not demoing for 600,000. We're taking the 600,000 and entering into a real estate agreement through the ordinance.
I think it's important to remember that $600,000 is approximate value of what the demolition costs. I think that's kind of where that number came from. But this is not a demolition project. It's an incentive to the project to facilitate all of the transactions associated with the project.
That's in the ordinance, but there's a resolution also. What's the resolution doing?
So it is, it is consolidating the $600,000 from accounts that were for the demolition. Again, the value of the demolition is about 600,000 or so. So that's where this, the value of this incentive came from. But that this, these funds aren't necessarily, the city is not entering into a contract to demolish the building itself. So where these funds came from, right? Normally, we'd be out demolishing a building that would be using these funds. This case, these funds are going to get transferred into an account that will be an incentive for this project. And again, the value that is about the same as that.
They're being pulled for demo, from demo funds, but they're really not going to be used for demo. They're going to be used as part of the real estate.
As an incentive for this entire project. Again, everything from the real estate transaction to the demolition of the building, to the construction of the new housing, is going to facilitate the rest of the deal with Circle K and Converges.
The housing developer.
Well, we can't enter into an agreement with the housing developer until we have site control of the property. And so what we're going to be doing is issuing an RFP very soon. Whether this goes through or not, we do have another property that we have, you know, a predevelopment grant on. We are going to be issuing an RFP. We've already had several walkthroughs with nonprofit developers from outside of town. And they're very interested in, you know, breaking into the Pueblo market. So and and it's really timely because
So then we don't have a developer because we talked about you, you introduced saying now we have a developer on both the housing side and the property side, but
Circle K is one of the developers in the project. So we do have that that developer identified. The developer for the housing portion is not yet identified because we haven't put the RFP out yet, but that will be coming.
And I, and I've spoken to developers. They are very interested in the Pueblo area. Just last week, I talked to a few folks who were asking, you know, when is the RFP going to come out? Whether it's, like I said, for this site or the other site that we currently own. They are very interested in breaking into the Pueblo market. And as I was saying, it was, it's very timely because right now, you know, a lot of our housing developers, especially our nonprofit affordable housing developers, their hands are full with projects that they have going on. And so to bring other folks into the space, into Pueblo, who are really wanting to come here would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I think through that report, guys, you know, I I think this is a pretty good project. You know, it handles blight in a district that is ridden with blight. It creates access to more food, creates housing, which is one of the biggest problems community faces. And like you said, it's a catalyst in that district that currently has no plan to help generating TIF otherwise. So I really like all of this and I'm glad that this is a coming to fruition finally. One question I did have is with the roof being open, is there currently like demolition going on right now or like, why was somebody in there already cleaning it up? Or are they already in the process of doing the demo?
So as I understand, there's a contractor employed by Converges Concentrix for cleaning up the collapsed portion of the roof, trying to secure the building. Again, they had, they're, they're starting with that process, but it was not necessarily the full demolition started yet. But that's, Converges is part of the project.
Yeah, and and it's part of the, there's, there's two different sets of contracts. We have a contract that this is what we're discussing here tonight with Circle K. Circle K has a contract with Convergence, Converges. And in that contract, they are paying them essentially to have Converges do the demolition. So if we, it it's kind of a domino effect. If we do not approve this, Circle K has no ability to to own that entire property or the the financial feasibility to then demolish the building. They pull out of the Circle K, I'm sorry, out of the Converges contract and then Converges is not having their financial incentive to knock down the building. And so we then are not confident that it would be, that we think that it would continue to be blight in the area.
And you did say that there's asbestos that had to be removed?
There is, there's, I don't know the exact amounts or types, but I understand flooring materials. And some of the other building materials also still had asbestos that could be evaded.
So if this were to get approved, what's kind of like the estimated timeline, do you think, of this?
I don't know. So I I do, I mean, I know that in the contract between Converges and Circle K, they have 90 days from the date of execution, which they will execute as soon as we execute to demolish the building. However, whether or not we are able to get the state permits or they are able to get the state permits, that is the question. So they already have a contractor selected and ready to go, but they are just waiting for those state permits. So that is the big, they can move as quickly as the state can.
Thank you. One more question. Are you wearing this sweater vest in honor of Scott Hobson?
It is Scott Hobson season again. Now it's cooled down.
So far.
I know, I couldn't remember. It wasn't a question, it was really a statement I was going to make. And that is, when the public says, well, why are you, why are we spending this amount of money to tear down this building? I think you've you've addressed it and I think you've addressed it very well. Because I think the the question that generated this additional discussion was that we should have been using that money to knock down residential properties around town and maybe not this one. But now you see how this plan could potentially house up to 45 to 50 families, solving a real need that we have in residential housing. The the food desert thing, which is huge, which is a residential problem. It, and then you have, you know, the the convenience of the Circle K and, you know, providing the grocery store. But there there could be a bonus to it, cleaning up Ray Aguilera Park too, because that corner is is kind of deteriorating in that. And I know that Councilman Gomez has been trying to do some things there, but all, all around this particular project, I think it all fits into place. And I'm encouraged that we could be looking at this. I think it's a great plan. Thank you.
That's amazing.
Yeah, me.
Councilor Tini.
Yes. Is there anything, discussion about anything happening on the east side?
Yes, actually, the other law in question that I'm talking about with a developer coming in is on the east side. It's at the 1300 block of East Fourth. I think that's the address, the old Pueblo Community Health Center.
Okay.
Is that it, Joe?
Okay, I got a couple of things real quick. Since I live 50 yards right from the front door of this place, we all remember the shootout at the OK Bessmer Corral. Um, and we all remember the shootout at the OK Bessmer Corral there. Um, I got concerns and I brought this up several times. Our main obligation is supposed to be safety to the community. Well, it ain't safe there, we all know it. Um, the fact that there are other parts of town that get a little different view than I think we get in the low income areas has got me concerned. Um, I've talked about a low income housing gated community. I know it sounds bizarre to a lot of people, but I bet you if you did some kind of damage control, excuse me, uh, if you did some kind of, um, looking at the, the property, the damage, the thefts, the assaults of all these places. If you put a twenty, I thought it was twenty-eight, now it's forty-five, uh, apartments in there, that's going to be an open magnet. And with all the problems we have in that area, I know most of the drug dealers, I, I know, I know a lot about my area. And leaving that thing open like that, in short order, we're going to have a lot of problems there. And I bet you if you did a cost benefit analysis, you'd see in the long run by putting a gated community, making that a gated community, you'd save a lot of money in the long run. But leaving that open like that is wrong. It's not safety. That's an open invitation to come in and destroy this property. I've seen it. I've seen it in other low income area, housing projects, Bethlehem Apartments for one of them. The things that we keep on doing to these low incomes just because they're low income is wrong. So that's just my opinion. Um, we also had to consider the, the, uh, idea that we have the asbestos issue, the insurance issues that we have, we're not seeing, how's that money going, where's it going to? What about, um, do we have pictures of the, maybe drone pictures of the roof? Do we have any damage reports on what has actually been taken out of that property or the stuff that's been stolen? Where is all that information?
Counselor, I'm not sure how that's relevant to the specific case that we're talking about. The roof has collapsed. We showed pictures a few minutes ago of a big hole. You could see the sky from the floor. Uh, if you want to see it from the other direction, I'm sure we can provide those. But I also don't understand how the facilitation of the construction of modern safe housing units is even comparable to the idea of leaving this blight across the street from your home. And everybody else's home in that neighborhood. This is the opportunity the city has to clean this project up or clean this corner up. And it's, it's up to council at this moment to make a decision whether or not to support or not.
With all due respect, I live right there. I don't drive through it, Andrew, and I'm telling you, I see it every day. And we're, we're going to set this thing up, it'll come out, it'll start out great, and eventually it's going to be a problem. All I'm asking for is some consideration for a gated community for a low income area. I think in the long run, you're going to save a lot of money. That's my opinion. Okay, next thing.
Counselor Gomez, can, do you mind if I just respond to that really quickly? Because it's not as crazy as you might think. We just recently approved a, um, an affordable housing or workforce housing, whatever we want to call it, hundred and ninety-two unit, um, in Councilor Latino's district. And when Councilor Latino was engaging with this developer a few years ago, he did ask if it's possible to put a fence around it and in their plans right now, it is a gated community. And so it, it is something that if, if it's known upfront, you know, potentially can be worked into those, those project costs.
Well, I would be much more favored the project if that was the case. Okay, um, in reference to the question about the insurance that our insurance expert brought up, what is the situation with that? How is Convergus, Convergus on the hook? They're not on the hook. How do you explain that?
So I just mentioned a few minutes ago that the, we need to confirm it, but we should have a note that suggested that Convergus is deductible far exceeded the value of the claim they could have filed. So in that case, they would not have filed a claim. We'll go ahead and check that though. I haven't, that was information that came to us during the meeting here, so I'll verify that to be true and let you guys know.
And a lot of that insurance complexity, we can count on.
It's a, it's a claim and the deductible. Kind of where I heard that. Exceeds, so anybody who has filed a claim before knows if you're deductible is higher than the claim value, you won't file it. The insurance will reject that claim. I, I believe that's correct, right, Counselor Flores? Correct, okay. Thank you.
Is that satisfactory? Okay, any other comments, questions? I think we're good. Thank you, guys. Next up, we have the twenty twenty-six budget work session with Heather Graham Mayer. Ninety-minute presentation, get your popcorn out.
Thank you, Chair Gomez. Clyde, can you get the presentation ready? Along with the presentation tonight, I left at your desk.
Can you pull that mic just a little closer to you?
Is that better? Is that better?
Yeah, that's correct. Thank you.
Along with the presentation tonight at your desks, I also left you an updated B one. So this is different than the B one that you're going to see, um, in the presentation tonight. And that's in your budget books with the decrease of six hundred thousand dollars in the good. So we were at, uh, twelve point five deficit, now we're at eleven nine. Um, you're also going to see the, um, I did get a question on the twenty twenty-six pay with the three point two five percent increase to directors in appointed positions. So that's going to be this sheet. It has the employee's director's name, um, their current twenty twenty-five K and what the three point two five increase will be. So you can see the highest increase is around six thousand dollars a year and the lowest increase is three thousand dollars. So no forty thousand dollar pay increases for directors this year. The next thing you're going to see is I have included your background paper from your twenty twenty-five proposed budget that you approved. An accountant two paid out of the four thirteen account. What does that mean? That means that City Council approved the hiring of an accountant that specifically works on PEDCO's half cent sales tax, reports, contracts, all the day-to-day money within the half cent sales tax. So there was also a question about this position and was this approved by City Council? You can see the highlighted position accountant two paid out of the four thirteen account. The last sheet of paper I included is the staff in my office who are grant-funded positions. You'll see two grant-funded positions with their names, just transitions. And the FEC coordinator, their salaries totaling a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. So I had also received a question of why is the mayor's salary wages under the mayor's office so high? You will see that a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars of that money is a hundred percent grant funded. So those are the questions that I have received thus far from the City Council. So I wanted to provide, um, that for you before we get started tonight.
Can we have Council Meister respond?
Did you have a question?
No, well, let's go back to the, um, the, uh, tax, I mean, the person in the finance department working on the PEDCO account. So is it true that we're not supposed to use absent sales tax for the, for PEDCO salary? I mean, for, for, uh, salaries?
Our contract with PEDCO states that the monies that we provide with them.
Part of the.
The three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that contract says that that money cannot be used for salaries.
Is it in the, um, language?
It is not.
Half cents, sales tax.
It is not. So you'll see in your budget book, there's several different professional services line items that come out of the half cent sales tax. We have, we had a property manager that was paid, property maintenance manager that was listed under their professional services contract that I ended earlier this year. Um, so we pay different property maintenance, um, different updates to the buildings, um, employees who are specifically dedicated to any of the properties that are maintained within the four thirteen account. That is an allowable expense of the four thirteen account.
So is the hundred and twenty thousand dollars taken from the account annually, is that strictly for their salary?
It is.
That salary and benefits?
Salary and benefits.
It's salary and benefits. And I do remember the question at the time that you did hire, um, someone for that. It was, there really wasn't enough full-time work for that position.
That was never the case. It's a full-time job and David is in the office every single day doing full-time work, looking at contracts, um, doing site visits, um, making phone calls for, um, prospects that have not paid the city. That is how we've been able to collect on all of these outstanding contracts that are owed to the half cent sales tax. If you recall, the one point three million dollars that we collected a few minutes, a few months ago, um, it was because David had gone through the entire contract, finding that they owed the city money. We've collected on several other contracts that way because we have an accountant who goes strategically over their books.
So once those, um, once that gets evened out and we find the back errors, do you feel that that's still a full-time position?
Yeah, absolutely, because you have several businesses who have to report every month. How many businesses do we have that are currently fifteen? Probably.
At least.
Who receive half cent sales tax dollars?
Takes what, posting fifteen businesses?
Well, it takes site select, going out to sites, visiting, making sure employees are actually where they're supposed to be, um, making sure that they make their payments, they reconcile the half cent sales tax account that's given to, um, the PEDCO board meeting, um, every month. This accountant, we had an accountant within the city who did that previously. That was their full-time job. Um, but this is, needs to be a job that's paid for by the half cent sales tax.
All right.
Council Martinez.
While we're asking questions, Mayor, what's the difference between the B one in here and then the B one that you gave us?
Six hundred thousand dollars.
But what is that attributed to?
Um, so when we, when City Council had approved the COS positions and freezing of the five police officers, the new COS positions were put into the B one that we provided to you, but the five officers that were unfunded were not. So this is a reflection of five officers that are now unfunded within the police department because we have five new CSOs. It's about six hundred thousand.
And they're all CSOs, they're not.
Correct.
Okay, so then in the staffing cha, the changes for PD, um, it looks like it increased by five. Is that, are those the five CSOs from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six?
Or we, you did that in twenty, you did that this year in twenty twenty-five, so we brought that to you in twenty twenty-five. You approved those additional five positions, but we froze five positions. So in this first B one that we presented you, we had still left those five officers funded and not frozen. So we unfunded those positions, which had an overall increase to the deficit of six hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, but looking at the actual budget book, so B nine, the, uh, police, um, from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, oh, it's four.
What are you looking at?
For, uh, page B nine, the staffing level summary by department.
Are you saying B nine?
B, as in boy or Ben.
Counselor, uh, in the twenty twenty-six budget, there is also an abolishment of a position in PD, it was the.
CRV.
Um, C I R V coordinator.
C I R V program manager was grant funded.
So that reduces that staffing level, um, there's our missing one.
Okay, we'll, we'll circle back after your presentation.
Okay, so some key dates to remember, so October fourteenth, you were presented the budget. Um, tonight I am here doing the only work session, um, presentation unless there's further, uh, work sessions requested by City Council. October twenty-seventh will be the formal public hearing. Uh, first presentation of the budget will be November tenth, with the second presentation being November twenty-fourth. Some outlooks, um, and information from the proposed budget. So we again went through eight thousand line items to make significant cuts in operations, um, to this year's budget. We are projecting a one percent decrease over the twenty twenty-five sales tax revenues for twenty twenty-six. Our property tax, um, evaluation coming from the county is about twenty-one million dollars. Our health insurance costs have an increase of five point eight percent totaling one point four million dollars for twenty twenty-six. Capital improvements, um, three point two million dollars in the capital improvement, um, fund for twenty twenty-six proposed. In twenty twenty-four, excuse me, twenty twenty-five, we've received twenty-seven million, three hundred and nine dollars in grant funding. We put that number in always in the year that we're in, um, because some of these grants will go into next year and, and many years, uh, beyond. The external, uh, sources of money that are coming into the city are the highway user tax fund. That's what we pave roads with, the E nine eleven fund and the conservation trust fund, which is the lottery funds. Um, and we usually receive about one point four million dollars in there. And that's how we upkeep parks, uh, do projects for parks, buy park, our park equipment. Um, and we use some of those dollars to pay staff, parks and employees. So what, the annual budget, what is it? Is it a legal document, um, proposed expenditures and revenues over the year? Um, so this budget tonight that I'm giving you is the proposed twenty twenty-five budget, twenty twenty-six budget. In this budget, you will see projections from twenty twenty-five. So if you're going to be making a, a reference between twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, you need to look at the twenty twenty-five proposed as a proposed to the twenty twenty-six, not the projected. Um, because there has been some confusion on the fifteen percent or the cutting in operations because the projected number is much different than the proposed number from twenty twenty-five. What is the annual budget process? So, um, I had this in my slide deck this last year, so I just thought we'd have a refresher. So, uh, the first few months, we put out the direction. I came to City Council. We had a budget work session. I asked for City, I asked from City Council, what do you want to see in the twenty twenty-six, uh, proposed? The largest number of a decrease was fifteen percent coming from Councilman Gomez. So, um, we did a fifteen percent reduction in operations, all operations from the city. Um, I came back and I gave you a work session on what it would be if we had to cut, um, part-time employees, if we had to start laying off staff shortly after. So this is kind of, um, the preparation, the review, the approval, the implementation process and how we're, um, how we are and where we are right now. So right now, you're seeing the projected twenty twenty-five numbers and the proposed twenty twenty-six budget. Do you have a question, Counsel Meister?
No.
Okay. So on this one, you're going to see the B one. You can see, um, the decrease in fund balance of eleven point nine million dollars. And then I just wanted to also touch on this. So, um, you can see where the large increase comes from. So that's going to be the personnel costs. Um, the twenty twenty-five proposed budget had, um, our wages at about ninety-four million dollars. Our twenty twenty-six proposed budget is around ninety-nine million dollars. So that additional five million dollars comes from our health insurance, um, our union contracts and negotiations that were passed by City Council for PD, FIRE and general services. And I have a slide coming up that breaks down, um, each of those line items. You can see the operations cost, the twenty twenty-five, um, is about sixteen million dollars. Twenty twenty-six adopted fourteen million. You can see every single line item right here, um, has a decrease except for the non-departmental contractual. And that is because we moved the CSAC, um, from other contributions and donations and to, um, non-departmental costs as, as where they should now fall. In this next slide, this is a change in your fund balance from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-six. You can see every single year, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six, there is a decrease in the fund balance. So every single year since twenty eighteen, we have had to take money out of our fund balance to balance the budget. On the right side, you can see what the actual change is. Why sometimes does the actual change look different? On some of those years, the city took in way more money than we thought we were going to take in and we debroussed. So the city was able, able to keep, you can see the actual change, fifteen million dollars and twelve million dollars in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Um, when we debroussed, we promised we were going to fix infrastructure and pave roads. And that is what we did. You can also see the twenty twenty-five projected, uh, the adopted change was eight point five million. As it sits today, we're only looking at five point six, uh, decrease to the fund balance through twenty twenty-five. Um, and again, that has to do with the increase in the hiring of police officers because that's where you see a lot of that money roll over year after year. Any questions to this point?
So you're saying twenty twenty-one shows a positive because of the, uh.
Debruising and twenty-two.
And twenty-two.
So it was about twenty-seven million dollars that the city took in, in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two that wasn't returned.
As well as debruising, uh, we also had economic stimulus money, uh, through federal, um, dollars that citizens received, spending increased. We also got online to the. We also got online to the Colorado SUTS portal and we had a huge influx of out-of-state online retailers who are now able to remit sales tax. So they were holding on to those dollars. So we had a huge influx those two years.
Yeah, so that the citizens understand when we talk about debruising, that's when they gave up their two A money in order to do roads.
Correct.
But we don't have any, we haven't had any since then.
Correct.
Okay.
These are your twenty twenty-six budgeted revenues. We're looking to bring in about a hundred million in general taxes, one point one million in licensing and permit, two point seven five in intergovernmental receipts, five million charge for services, one point four million fines and fortatures, two point five million other revenues and four point eight transfers in from other funds. So our largest single makeup of our budget comes from our city sales tax. So city sales tax, the city of Pueblo is three point seven percent. Three percent of it goes to the general fund, point five percent goes to economic development and point two percent goes to the public safety sales tax. We pay twenty-four officers with those funds. We pay for their body warm cameras. We pay for technology and new cars you'll see in this proposed budget for twenty twenty-six. Sales tax makes up sixty-six, sixty-six point eight percent of all general taxes in the twenty twenty-six budget, but we are expecting a one percent decrease in sales tax revenue collections for twenty twenty-six. On the right, you will see the general fund operating expenditures. So you can see what they have been from twenty twenty now to twenty twenty-six. You can see the sixteen point three million dollars in twenty twenty-five with the reduction in twenty twenty-six of fourteen point three nine million. So this again came from city council's direction of cutting fifteen percent off of operations. All of our non-departmentals were also asked to cut their operations fifteen percent. All nonprofit funding that does nonprofits that do not have a contractual agreement with the city of Pueblo, Pueblo were referred to CSAC this year in August to be able to apply for additional funding through CSAC. I increased CSAC funding sixty thousand dollars, giving them a ground total of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the county has also agreed to match that five hundred and fifty thousand dollar, dollars, excuse me, leaving a total dollar amount of one point one million dollars for nonprofits to apply through CSAC. This is the expenditures, you'll see the twenty twenty-five estimated and the twenty twenty-six proposed. You can see all the decreases from non-departmental contractual, health and welfare, other contributions, transfers to other funds and operating with a total reduction in operations from the twenty twenty-five to the twenty twenty-six of five point one million dollars. Any questions? We could come back if you do.
Council Boston. I was just gonna say the contractual agreements, do we know specifically which ones and why it went up? I know HSPPR is going to be one of them, but.
So the contractual agreements, so previously our CSAC funding was listed under other contributions and donations. And I moved that line, I'm line item up to contractual agreements. That's why you see that increase of six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Every non-departmental nonprofit that the city has a contract with, aside from HSPPR and the zoo took a fifteen percent reduction in their overall operating. And you all have all of those. I think you received them last Monday night or the Monday night before at your desks in a binder. If you did not, let us know and we can get that for you.
I have a quick question about the non-departmental stuff.
Yep.
So for the contracts that we have, are all of those signed and good to go?
You're going to start see that, seeing them come before city council. These are contracts that we have been working with. Some of the contracts have expired, some of them were on a year-to-year, so we'd like to do three years at a time. So city council, over the next couple of months, will start seeing these contracts and approving them.
Oh, okay, so we're gonna approve them?
Yeah. Like HSPPR, their contract, this was their last year of their three-year deal.
And all contracts will go on a three-year basis?
That's what we're trying to get.
Is the allotment identified in the contract?
Yes.
And how much, is it just dependent per agency on how much it's increased per?
Yes, so like specifically for the zoo, I know when the zoo came and presented to you, one thing that wasn't touched on is although we made them take a fifteen percent reduction, within that fifteen percent reduction, the city is going to be subsidizing some of their maintenance costs, some of their project costs that they have in the facility using city staff to go out and do that work. So overall, they really took about a two point, a point two percent reduction overall. And HSPPR, after they came to city council, I left them at the requested amount that they had asked for. So this two million nineteen is their full request without the fifteen percent reduction. I think it's a twenty percent increase from their last budget. Any other questions on the nonprofit? You could find the, the non-departmentals on page D fifty-two if you're looking for them. I'll also mention that under the nonprofits, non-departmental expenditures, you'll also see the shelter listed under there. So when the RFP was fulfilled, it was fulfilled for twelve months. We awarded the RFP in May of twenty twenty-five. So they will have received seven years or seven years, seven months of funding through twenty twenty-five. And then in twenty twenty-six, we will owe them five additional months for that contract. So that's why you see the amount at two hundred and sixty-six thousand.
The, I'm looking at the non-departmental request out of the book that.
Sure.
It's given to us, says HSPPR asked for two million, two oh nine, two thirty-four.
Then they came and did their presentation and they did the reduction if the city was willing to do the small animal pickup for deceased animals on the side of the road. And that is, that is what we agreed to for their reduction.
And then?
They also talked about applying some of those revenues with the permitting and their licensing fees that they hadn't done when they had submitted that to the city. So those were some of the, the ways that we have negotiated with them moving forward. But that was submitted in, in August and since then, we've had multiple meetings and they came to city council saying that they would give back those certain line items when it comes to permits and licensing, fees and licensing, excuse me.
Council Maestri, you have anything else? Okay.
Okay, personnel changes. So the direction to staff was no additional personnel for the twenty twenty-six budget, obviously because we are trying to cut back. The police department did submit a, and asked for fifteen new positions. Those positions were made up of real-time crime center, techs, a couple people within their records department, a volunteer, full-time coordinator, several other positions that they can do without for the twenty twenty-six budget. But ultimately, zero new positions were approved for twenty twenty-six's budget. Personnel changes that were abolished. You can see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven positions that are going to be abolished for the twenty twenty-six budget, totaling a savings of two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Some of these positions were diverted into different positions and some of them were grant-funded. So you don't have any savings. The nonprofit compliance coordinator was abolished from my office, eighty-two thousand dollars. Media system specialists from IT and a network communications specialist too from IT were also abolished. Any questions on this one?
Nope.
Okay.
I do.
Yep.
Council Martinez.
Okay, so let's talk about the personnel changes because I really liked that graphic in the summary report. So I think it was like B five, no.
You said B nine.
Really was B nine.
B nine. Okay, so looking from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, the staffing level changes. Can you walk, so the, so twenty twenty-five in the mayor's office, there's a decrease in staff person, people that is attributed to the nonprofit compliance coordinator.
Correct.
Okay, in the housing and citizen services, they're adding five positions, but that's because they were originally within the planning and zoning office.
Correct.
Which is also why in the planning and zoning, planning and development office.
They had a decrease by positions, correct.
Okay, so IT, there's two positions that are out, which is the two that you just talked about.
Yep.
And then in PD, there's still four positions from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six that are added.
Yes, and those are the CSOs.
So we added five CSOs a few months back in exchange for unfunding five officers. So those five officers are still authorized positions.
But not funded.
But they are unfunded, so they are not budgeted for in twenty twenty-six.
Okay, Danny, that's five. Why does it say four though?
The.
The I.
That, that you're saying earlier, that it was grant-funded, came to an end, that was the one missing one.
Right.
Okay, I'm done.
Any, any other questions on this side? Okay, next is the wage changes. What's supposed to say twenty twenty-six budget, but I missed that one. Okay, so first we, on top, we're gonna see the appointed management, three point two point, three point two five increase. They get the same as general services. You see that amount at four hundred and eighty-one thousand. The general service, three point two five increase that you approved at one million. The fire increase at four point seven two that you approved at nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And you see the two different increases, four percent for sergeant and three point six percent increase for police at a little over a million dollars. That was approved by council a couple of months ago for a grand total of three point five million dollars in increase in wages. This is just, the wages, this does not account for their health insurance benefits. Any question, Council Boston?
I was just curious, why is there an asterisk on the appointed management increase percentage without any disclaimer as to what it means? Or is it just a typo? It just says increase with the asterisk?
I don't know. Might just put that there to look fancy, I guess.
Normally it just like, means like there's something to it, so I was just curious if it meant something.
I will just say that normally the appointed management gets the same pay increase that general service page employees receive. Okay, moving on to the capital improvement plan. It's kind of tiny there, so. You can see the different funding sources across and the projects listed. So general fund, two hundred thousand dollars has been taken out of the general fund for the home. Grant match has to come out of the general fund. We cannot use the half-cent sales tax interest account, which is the next fund over that you will see. So last year and this year, the only funds that were used for capital improvement in the city was the interest that has been incurred over the half-cent sales tax account. And you can see all of the different line items of projects within the city. So fire apparatus and equipment, fire station upgrades, city building repairs, citywide cleanup projects, unsafe building demo, police drones as first responders, fire EKG monitors. The city annex, so the new, what was the PBR building, what is now being called the city annex building, that payment is going to be coming out of this economic development interest. So that is not going to hit the general fund. Interest is going to pay that payment, not only for the PBR building, but also for the PMJC air conditioner. And you can see that list that I have them highlighted, the eight hundred and thirty-five thousand and the seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So I repeat, those two large projects will have no impact on the city's general fund. This money is coming straight out of the interest generated off of the half-cent sales tax. Council Maestri?
The total interest that we generate per year?
It's about three point five million.
And what if we have some decreases this year? Say we invest in some.
Forty million dollars in a project? Right, so then we'd have about one point six million dollars still in interest. So that would really be at the decision of whoever's sitting in this chair when they present the budget, if they want to use half-cent sales tax dollars to pay for large capital projects or they want to break that money up and pay for numerous projects within the capital account. Moving on to the airport art truck of twenty thousand, airport elevate, elevator modernization. And then it goes over to the E nine one one funds and you can see their software support, equipment at three hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and one thousand out of their system software and supports. The PSST, that's the public safety sales tax. If you go all the way down to the bottom, you can see that we're going to allocate seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the public safety sales tax for new police cars. It'll give us, get us about seven new vehicles going into twenty twenty-six. The next column is going to be your enterprise fund, so wastewater and stormwater. And you can see that that's twenty-one million dollars in different projects for those two enterprises between stormwater and wastewater. The last column, second to last column, is going to be our lottery funds. And those are the funds that I was talking about that are dedicated to our parks. So parks, equipment, tennis courts, pools, anything that has to do with the city parks and recs department. We use those funds to do capital improvement projects, purchase vehicles and pay employees. So we generate one point four million dollars a year in those lottery funds. And then the last column that you're going to see is the highway user trust fund, which is where we receive money for our roads. We think we're going to receive about three point five million dollars for twenty twenty-six's budget. Some of that money is only earmarked for bridges, but a large portion of it will be used for street resurfacing. Does anybody have any comments or questions on the capital projects?
Oh, Council Flor, sorry. On the highway user trust fund, it seems to me that we've been getting over the last time I've been on council, the last nine years, about five million. Is that, is that a result of the state? That money comes from the state, right? Is that because of their budget shortfall or am I, am I wrong on that? I, I thought we were getting consistently a little bit more than five million over the last, over at least the last five years that I could recollect.
These are state dollars. I believe there has been a trend downward. I can verify, but those numbers have been in prior years though. But our estimate from the state for twenty twenty-six is the three point four, seven, five.
Is there, is there highway user trust fund money someplace else? I, I know that when we talk about this, we may not include the salary of the road and the road department because they do a lot of patchwork and I think sometimes we take money out of here for that, don't we?
Yep, we put that full allotment into street rehabilitation, yeah.
The other question I had had to do, and I ask this question every year, and that is, is, is there a way of calculating? As you know, all of our employees in the city, all of their slots are, you know. Um, you know, are always there if we need them. But there's always an average of seventy to eighty slots that are never filled. Uh, during, uh, and that varies from department to department. So if you have eighty slots that are not filled, but they're approved within the budget. We have to, we have to feel like those are filled. Uh, but I, I've never been given, and I don't know if you can do that now, but I've never been given the number. That, that is money that is not expended. We go through this exercise every year. And every year, at the end of the year, we find out that none of the seventy or eighty slots that were open. Uh, and so that evolves into a number. Uh, that uh is a large number. Obviously, we're talking about seventy people on average. Uh, so, but that, just to reconfirm, there's no way of determining that uh as a separate number. To say, yes, our deficit this year is blank, but we can anticipate with a certain amount of certainty. That uh we probably will not fill maybe sixty positions in twenty twenty six.
Sure, so uh we can't do that budgeting for a future year. But in hindsight, I would pay, pay, say, the last few years. There's been approximately maybe four to five million perhaps. That were unspent uh that are in the personnel budget. That uh are dollars that do go unspent throughout the year. Because we don't have people in those vacancies or there's other attrition throughout the year. That can happen.
Council, I just want to point you to H three. This is gonna be our inter, intergovernmental fund, and you can see the highway user. Um, you can see the total this year is five point three million dollars, but in the capital side, we're only using three point seven five. Total for road resurfacing. That other balance has speci- specifically has to go to projects, um, bridges. Roundabouts, et cetera. So that total is around five point three. Just the allocation for resurfacing is um that little over three million in the, in the capital, so you're correct. And then.
Yeah, I see the, I see the page there.
Yeah, so I mean, it is a decrease of three hundred thousand dollars from twenty twenty five's proposed. So you are seeing a little bit of a decrease from what the state had given us this year. Uh, but that's your total amount in there, just the three point.
I mean, on the surface, I thought.
Right, just the three point seven five is the road resurfacing.
Yeah, I do see it, thanks.
And then I just, uh, for the second part of your question, when you're talking about um. The adopted changes versus the actual changes, you can really see those open positions. Um, play into these areas, uh, like, for example, twenty twenty five's projected amount. We projected we were gonna have an eight point six million dollar deficit. Um, but our actual change, we think is going to be more like five point six. And that is because of those open positions that you're talking about every year. So you can really see in twenty three and twenty four, um, sixteen million to nine million to seven million dollar deficit. We probably had lots of police positions um open at that time. Same thing in twenty twenty four, we went from a ten million dollar adopted change to a five point five. And so that's where you really see uh the makeup of those positions that are funded, um, but don't get hired for. Currently, right now in the, in the city, um, our director of H R Marissa Pacheco put this together for me. And we currently, as of ten twenty twenty five, have a hundred and six vacancies. Um, forty of those vacancies being police officers, um, and this includes transit and all frozen positions in the city. So there's um, could be a rotating sixty positions, including transit and including the frozen positions. That may or may not be filled before the end of the year, so you will see those monies roll over.
Since we're talking about the police department, I was thinking yesterday. We have so many positions to fill uh in the city. Why do we not consider bringing back our S R O officers and bringing them back into the city? And transitioning District sixty into the use of um merchant patrol operations. Which there's many in the community. I know that's not a budget question. Well, I guess in a way it is, but uh. Uh, I, I don't know. I mean, if we've got an S R O officer in every high school, every middle school.
I think we have nine, is that right, Chief? Nine S R Os. And those, those conversations have, they've taken place, they've taken place a lot this year, um, about what that would look like. And quite frankly, I don't think that the district, um, or the parents in their district want a security company doing. Uh, security in high schools. They want um post-certified police officers that are gonna be there to protect their students. If something shall happen, um, and that's a decision made by the district and the police department to continue that, that relationship. Because we feel that it's important, um, and so do the schools. They feel that it's important to have actual officers in the schools and not. Um, not patrol, private security.
Yeah, and I would, I would respect that decision. Uh, it has to be analyzed, but.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Austin.
Thank you, Chair. I just kinda wanted to help provide some insight on your first question with the highway user tax. Um, so that's mostly funded by gasoline tax, if I'm not mistaken. And uh now we're seeing a lot more E Vs on the road, and those aren't required to pay gas tax, obviously, because they're not using gas. And with the Model Y being one of the number one selling vehicles in the world, that's why you're starting to see gradual decline year over year. Um, it's been discussed in PayCOG, you're thinking about adding a tax to E V users, probably upon registration or something like that, to kinda help fill those gaps. But just to explain why you're seeing some year-over-year decreases in that, it's mainly due to the influx of E V drivers.
Councilor Martinez.
So for the capital projects, to go back to the capital project.
Yep.
Um, I think these two belong to Parks and Rec, the athletic facilities lighting. What's that?
That is the lighting that is over the ball fields.
In City Park?
Yes, ball field four and five or. Tell us, Mike. Ball fields, three and four overhead lighting and the pickleball court lights.
Pickleball courts at Mineral Palace, Mike? The pickleball courts at Mineral Palace? Okay, and then the swimming pool upgrades? Is that both or all pools?
Yeah, we just have a continuous C I account that they put a little bit of money in every year, depending on if a heater goes out. Or if we need to patch a liner, um.
Okay, and then a couple on the next page all belong to Stormwater. The Stormwater Bay State and Pine Rehab, Highland Avenue Flooding, and then Lake Menacaw at Brown.
Kurt will come talk to you about that.
Sorry, Kurt. Hey, Kurt.
Hi.
So I need the Stormwater Bay State and Pine Rehab.
So Bay State and Pine, we've had continuous issues with the, the canal over there, so it's ponding water, there's really nowhere for it to go. Um, so it's been a continuous issue for years and years, so we're gonna be doing some rehab to the canal and adding a. Uh, an inlet to let the water drain over there at that intersection.
Oh, and then Highland Avenue flooding?
So Highland Avenue, that was, that's a development over by Lake Menacaw. Um, so the current system runs right through somebody's backyard, so the current stormwater system runs right through someone's backyard. So every time we get a decent rainfall, it is kinda flooding out at least a couple of columns over there. So we are looking to reroute that storm sewer system um from a surface flow to a subsurface flow over to Lake Menacaw.
Okay, and then um Lake Menacaw at Brown?
So that is uh another ponding issue, so there's nowhere for the water to go at Brown. So every time it rains, it ponds over there at Brown before it can get to Lake Menacaw. And it's been flooding across the street um towards the Mobile Home Park, that's right there.
Can you remind me where Brown is?
Brown is just on the west, it's the northwest side of Lake Menacaw.
Okay.
It's a small street that comes um down.
Okay, thanks, Kurt.
Think we're good.
Anybody else capital?
Nope.
Okay. This is our uh twenty twenty five grant funding, so this is secured funding. Uh, by each department, whether it was federal, state, or foundation. Again, I like to throw these in because some of these grant dollars will continue into um twenty twenty six's projects. And then this is gonna be the information on the roads and streets uh rehab. So the twenty twenty six budget proposed in the improvement line, you see the three point four million out of the highway user trust fund. Um, and then we have two accounts, um, H U A N zero one and C I twenty five fifteen. Uh, that we are not going to be able to um spend that money through twenty twenty five. So we're gonna roll that additional six hundred thousand into twenty twenty six proposed road improvements. Um, totaling a little bit over four million dollars in total road investment uh for twenty twenty six's budget. And then a little disclaimer at the bottom, that if the one percent tax was to pass. We talked about potentially allocating that twenty six million dollars for all of uh. Rehab for twenty twenty six's budget for resurfacing. Questions and requests.
Councilor Martinez.
Yeah, Mayor, can you go back to the previous slide?
Yeah.
So those two accounts that are six hundred K, are those both within street repairs? Or those are other um accounts that just have extra money?
They're both within street repairs. H U N A is um highway user funds. And C I twenty four fifteen is a capital improvement project from twenty fourteen. For twenty twenty four for something that we're supposed to spend uh the money on to pave roads in twenty twenty four. Didn't finish paving or the projects didn't absorb all the money. And so between these two accounts, we have an extra six hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna roll into the twenty twenty six resurfacing plan.
Okay, um, my other question is talking about the revenues, the different revenue streams that we have. Help me understand why there's a projected, some, kind of a substantial increase in the lodging tax for twenty twenty six.
So we have had a larger increase. And um beginning about order five months ago in. Lodger's tax, so I'm projecting that to continue through twenty twenty five as well as twenty twenty six.
Some of it has to do with the um ordinance that City Council passed for the lodging in the hotels. So we've been able to go out and get a lot of hotels that weren't paying the way that they should be paying. Um, go and collect those funds. I've sent a couple of emails about how some of these hu- hotels had to pay a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. In back taxes, and so you're seeing those revenues rise um because of some hotels that we've. Um, went out and said, you're not, um, you're not reporting correctly, you're not paying correctly, um, and now you owe the city additional funds. So that's, we have many hotels in the community that were operating in that fashion before. And uh, so that's another reason why you're gonna see those increased um numbers.
Okay, and I just had a moment with Barrett, that even thinking about that, so that not only that, but then the short-term rental. Um, ordinance that we'll hopefully see soon, it's gonna be a nominal increase, but it's still something more than what, like for Airbnb's, V R B Os. Those types of stuff, okay. Um, on E one, so the debt service tab. What's the three oh three um? Uh, C O P four?
Sure, so um, that is part of what is funded in the capital improvement plan. For the.
P M J C.
P M J C, the C A B building. Um, the increase that you see in the three oh one fund for capital leases. Are the E K G monitors and the police drones.
Okay, and all of that's looped into one C O P?
No.
No, so there are two, so there's the uh C A B b- building. As well as the H vac at P M J C.
Two different C O Ps.
Okay.
We actually c- closed on that one on Friday.
Oh, that's good. Okay, um, and then, you know, talking about the contracting piece, so the non-departmental um donations. And then the contracting piece, I really like that the, the city is transitioning to a contract. Um, you know, I've, I've been really thinking about, um, so looking at the current list of contracts that we have. You know, as a council, I feel like we hear all the time that there's not a lot, not enough things for our young people to do. Whether that be on Fridays, because D sixteen, D seventy don't have school, um, on the weekends, I think is a huge thing. Um, and so I would like for the city to pursue a contract with um a. Specific around youth programming. I think that that adds to the quality of life. Um, I think that that adds to, you know, I, I can make so many different arguments about public safety, keeping our, our kids street. You know, um, busy off the street, off of drugs. Um, so I'd like the city to pursue a contract with um a youth programming um agency. As um we're adding on contracts and we're approving contracts from council. Okay, and then my last question, um, oh, a- as around revenue? So the transfers in, what are, why is that also an increase?
So uh in the two, twenty twenty six bu- budget, we are increasing the use of. Uh. E nine one one funds to subsidize the pay for dispatchers. As well as uh parks employees with lottery funds.
And the E nine one one is um the funds from every time some uh for dispatch, everyone, every time someone answers the phone?
That's right, there's a surcharge and that comes back to, to the city.
Okay, Councilwoman Austin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I had a question on D fifty four, um, the uh non-departmental contributions and donations. I see that uh there's a small amount of just twenty one thousand two hundred fifty dollars for um asbestos abatement, I believe, assistance. Just curious as to why that one line is still there and what it's for.
So the city of Pablo allocates, are you on D fifty two?
D fifty four.
D fifty four. The city of Pablo previously would offer twenty five thousand dollars worth of abatement assistance. That uh member, members of our community could apply um for if you got code violations or you needed abatement assistance. And so that twenty five thousand dollars has always um been in the budget uh to help citizens. Kind of reduce some of those costs to themselves.
Okay, and then um with H S P P R, uh, you said that we opted, or your recommendation is the option that uh removes dead animal pickup. Uh, is it uh under the assumption that Parks and Recs will be picking up that duty, or who do you?
It'd be the Public Works Department. The Public Works Department currently does pick up some of the larger um deceased animals. If, if, you know, they're blocking roadways and H S P P R can't um get there quick enough to remove them. And so it's not something that we do all the time, uh, but we do do it.
So it won't be too much of an inconvenience or any taxing?
It's a reduction, you know, same thing as uh the zoo, if we can put um some of our staff out there. Uh, to do the additional, additional jobs and we can see a reduction um in the contract costs, that's something that we're willing to do.
I had another one, but I forgot it.
Any other questions?
Yes. So any requests, any changes after tonight would have to be an amendment?
No, we could come back and do another work session, um, we could change it and we would just bring you a new.
But the na- first reading is on the twenty seventh, right?
That's the public, that's the public hearing, so.
Can change it after the public.
You can.
Thank you. Good.
Does anybody else have any?
Questions?
Additional requests or questions? Um, tonight is the only night that we are doing a budget presentation unless there is additional information. That City Council um needs to see or needs amendment-wise us to provide to you at this point.
Okay.
We good? President Alonzo.
Mr. Chair, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24 dash six dash four oh two, parent four, parent E, parent I. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes to discuss potential PEDCO projects. And second, to discuss status of Pueblo Regional Building Department intergovernmental agreement.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Oh, I got, let me finish my interruption. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those are against? The papers have, yes is out. Okay.
We are adjourned.